On May 25th, Ridgefield will hold a public hearing on its proposed affordable housing plan. On April 3rd, Ridgefield's Affordable Housing Committee released draft of their "Affordable Housing Plan." But this is not an affordable housing plan for Ridgefield. It is, in fact, a plan that is for housing that is deed restricted to low-income households. It is, in fact, a mislabeled, low-income restricted housing plan. The genesis of all this are two statutes: Section 830G, which has been on the books since 1989, and Section 830J that was added in 2017. So when one hears the term "affordable," this is what 830G says it means: either assisted housing or set-aside development. Assisted is defined as government-assisted for low- and moderate-income housing. Set-aside development is where 30% or more of the units are restricted to households with incomes less than or equal to 80% of the median income, and not less than 15% of the units restricted to households at less than or equal to 60% of the median household income. But they refer to the median income, it is not Ridgefield's $164,000 median income, it is Greater Danbury's $104,000 median income, which is 63% of Ridgefield's median. So 80% of Danbury's median is 51% of Ridgefield's median. The Hutt Area definition for a family of three in Greater Danbury: for a single, the restriction is pushed down to less than $65,000. And for those units restricted to 60% of the median income, the numbers are $62,649 for a family of three and $48,720 for a single. This means that only a small fraction of people living or wanting to live in Ridgefield would qualify for the low-income restrictions. Fast-forward 33 years to 2022, 830G was clearly not achieving the intended results. Only 31 of Connecticut's 169 towns have reached the 10% low-income restricted housing goal set back in 1989, and over 70% of the low-income housing was still concentrated in those towns. So Hartford decided to put the onus on towns to come up with their own plans. Enter 830J, requiring towns to adopt their own low-income restricted housing plans, showing how they intended to increase low-income housing even if there's no local need or shortage of low-income housing, and to adopt the first plan no later than June 1st, 2022. After months of working on the Affordable Housing Plan, Affordable Housing Committee members still did not understand that they are really talking about one thing: low-income restricted housing. Here this exchange with Krista Willett, a committee member. David Goldenberg clarifies that low-income restricted housing is what the plan advocates.
I think it's a little misleading to call it low-income housing. It's really affordable housing.
No, it is. It's low-income restricted. You have to be, to get into it, you have to be below a certain income level.
But what we're talking about is-
That's what we're talking about. That's exactly what you're talking about.
It's 80% of the state median income in our case.
Or below.
Or below.
Well, it means that, you know, a lot of the teachers, the people who work-
Teachers are well above that rate. Teachers make more than, the teachers, the teachers, the police, they all make more than that.
As you listen to the case, to build more low-income restricted housing, keep these simple facts in mind: Ridgefield has 286 low-income restricted housing units. That is 3% of the total units. It has a poverty rate of just 2%. Ridgefield is one of only 70 Connecticut towns with a higher percent of low-income restricted units than its poverty rate. So how much is enough? Mr. Goldenberg says Ridgefield is a prosperous paradise, but just not for everyone.
So the perception of Ridgefield, you and I hear this all the time, our median income is about $164,000. It's the safest town in Connecticut, number six in the USA. We have A-plus schools. It has Connecticut's first cultural district. We have Main Street that is the envy of towns surrounding us. Ridgefield is paradise. It's a perfect place. And I kind of agree with that. Thing is, it's not that way for everybody. And that's very important to understand. The reality is that 42% of renters are cost-burdened. And let me explain what the concept of cost-burdened is, because it weighs heavily into this. According to many, many studies, if you are spending more than 30% of your income on your total housing costs, and that includes principal interest, rent, taxes, insurance, maintenance, utilities, and so on, then you are cost-burdened.
In fact, 49% of Ridgefield's renters are cost-burdened by the definition of spending 30% or more of their income on housing. That is just below the state's norm of 51% of renters who are cost-burdened. Towns range from zero to a high of 80% of cost-burdened renters. Among Fairfield County towns, Ridgefield is just below the median of towns in terms of cost-burdened renters. But would more low-income restricted housing help any of the cost-burdened renters in Ridgefield? Would they qualify or even want to live in low-income restricted housing? Only 2% of Ridgefield households qualify at or below the poverty level, while 3% of household units are low-income restricted. Looking at Fairfield County towns, you can see where Ridgefield, in green, stacks up. How might more income restricted housing impact poverty rates and the percent of cost-burdened households? Poverty and low-income housing are correlated with a coefficient of .81. Whether the demand represented by poverty attracts the supply, or the supply attracts the demand, is debatable, and correlation should not be confused with cause and effect. But clearly, more low-income restricted housing does not lower the rate of poverty. So what about cost-burdened renters? These two variables have a low correlation and are largely independent of one another. If more low-income housing lowered the percent of cost-burdened renters, this would show a negative correlation. But there is no evidence to suggest that more low-income restricted housing reduces the cost-burden incidence among renters as a whole. So what evidence is there of local need? Mr. Goldenberg made that case this way when convincing the Board of Selectmen to approve a $50,000 grant application to expand affordable housing on Prospect Ridge.
First of all, there are now 152 Housing Authority-owned units. There are 60 Ballard-Green subsidized units, 38 affordable units, 34 congregate subsidized, and 20 family units at the Meadows. Here's the waiting list, and this is pretty startling. There's 129 names on the list for the 60 units. There are 265 names on the list for the general affordable unit. There are 76 waiting for the congregate subsidized, and there are 140 names on the family Meadows. Many people will wait years, and there's a high level of attrition on this as well. So the list gets smaller and gets larger over time, but we will never be able to meet the need we have with the housing that we have.
Fast-forward 19 months.
Another measure of need is the waiting list for public housing. Ballard-Green, there are 64 units and 73 people on the waiting list. The Meadows, there are 18 waiting for one of the 20 units. Congregate housing, there are 34 units, there are 14 waiting. That seems to go faster because that's for people who need some level of care, and they're more often moving out into a higher level of care. The general affordable units, there are 18 waiting for one of the 34 units. I said, "What is the waiting time?" It was really hard to say. The answer is years.
Since the Board of Selectmen approved applying for the state grant in October of 2020 to May of 2022, the waiting list strikes 75% from 618 names to 123 names. Were it not for an FOIA request for both the tenant role and waiting list, you might still be seeing very inflated and exaggerated numbers as evidence of local need. The FOI obtained list provided in December of 2021 counted 122 names on four property lists plus two labeled PR. But 29 of these names were on two lists, and six names were on three lists, for a net of 81 unduplicated names on all four lists plus PR. Of that 81 names, only 16, or one out of five, are from Ridgefield. Mr. Goldenberg suggests these people from outside of Ridgefield may have family or jobs in Ridgefield, but he has only anecdotal information to make this point, no hard evidence. This is not intended to say that people don't deserve to move into Ridgefield, but only to point out that the Housing Authority waiting list is a gross exaggeration of local need. But the Board of Selectmen blessed with this grant request to the state based on highly exaggerated numbers. This spawned perhaps the most controversial part of the plan, which is the conversion of open space on Prospect Ridge to low-income housing units.
Prospect Ridge campus as it exists, there are 34 congregate units, and those were within the larger, the two areas that are marked here, 20 general affordable. And on the left, that smaller parcel is the 20 family units of the Meadows, which was constructed in 2009. That originated in the Affordable Housing Committee and was taken over by the Housing Authority. So there are 74 total units there. Here's the proposed expansion area. In the upper left, you see the existing campus. There are two parcels that are up to the town. One of them contains the ball field, and one of them contains the soccer field. And what we are proposing is to utilize this area here. It is approximately 15 acres. It includes parts of those two parcels plus part of the existing parcel.
Dave, is it in the red? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's the red, sorry.
Okay.
That's approximately 15 acres. We estimate it could contain up to 150 units. Will that be what we propose to build? We don't know, and you'll see how we're going to figure that out in a few minutes. There are steep contours, there are wetlands, and this reduces the buildable area. Our goal is to leave the dog park and the playing fields untouched. There are three possible avenues of ingress through Halpin Lane, through Prospect Ridge, through Ivy Hill, but access is to be determined.
Mr. Goldenberg acknowledges his committee's role in the Meadows' development, which is infamously remembered as a financial debacle for the Housing Authority to absorb and to digest. So as you might imagine, the Housing Authority board members were astonished to learn that their good name and reputation was used without authorization to apply for the state grant. Here are excerpts from their conference call after they learned about this letter.
I am in receipt of a letter from Dave Goldenberg to the, you know, applying for his grant. In this letter, it does say that this is in conjunction with the Ridgefield Housing Authority, that we will take over the project. I think if nothing else, I think between the four board members, we have to maintain some kind of transparency on what's happening with that project so that we're all aware of it. Because again, I was blindsided by that information, that Dave Goldenberg has put it in there that we are going to take over this project. And that was in his application for this additional fund. It was just kind of shocking to me to again see that we are going to take over this project, like that was fed complete.
Well, I didn't know how to tell you, Jan, that is not the case. So it shouldn't be a shock to you because it is not the case.
And as a board, I look like a stupid idiot out there, not knowing what's going on. But now I'm in this letter where he says, "We're going to take this over." And it's like, where would he get that information if there wasn't some conversation that said, "Yes, we'll take it over"? I haven't signed off on that. I'm not aware of that. So-
Jan, that's not what was said.
Well, it may not be what was said, it may not be what was said, but that was written in the letter.
The Ridgefield Housing Authority's silence on the plan speaks volumes. But Mr. Goldenberg will embellish evidence anywhere he can find it. For example, he uses a small sample Boston study to imply local Ridgefield need, and from it spins a local narrative.
Housing for employees, this is a survey done at Northwestern in Boston. Of the surveys, 87 respondents, over 72% of companies say they have found it extremely or somewhat difficult to recruit and/or retain talent in the past five years. In addition, 67% claim home prices and rental costs have affected their ability to recruit qualified candidates. I've heard this anecdotally from many people. Like you go into a restaurant, and your table isn't getting waited on, and you say to the manager, "What's going on?" And they say, "I just don't have enough waiters." One of the reasons they don't have enough waiters is that there's not enough housing, not enough nearby housing for people. Because people have to travel, they would much prefer, of course, to work closer to where they live. And as a result, towns like Ridgefield are struggling to find employees.
That is a unvalidated assumption. This data appears to apply to a small sample in Boston. It's a huge leap from a labor shortage in Boston to low-income housing needs in Ridgefield. The labor shortage is acute both nationally and in Connecticut, but is Ridgefield at a disadvantage when it comes to having to import employees from other towns? Here's the commutation pattern for Ridgefield. We import 8,162 workers, or about 81% of our local workforce. Ridgefield is one of 23 towns in Fairfield County, crammed into 626 square miles with a county population of 943,000. Fairfield County towns are largely interdependent when it comes to workforce. Other Fairfield County towns import a much larger share of local workers from neighboring towns than Ridgefield does. But there are external forces and organizations that think they know Ridgefield's needs better than we do.
There are other studies that have been done by some other organizations, and these are much more analytical studies that have social science behind them and math and algorithms. And this is what they come up with. Jaffa says we need in Ridgefield about 2260. The Office, I'm sorry, the Opening Communities Alliance say we need 1,241. They're the ones who are pushing for the fair share regulation. The Regional Plan Authority says 1554. WestCOG, in their 2008 studies, said 1345. The truth is, these numbers are just, these are pie in the sky. I can't imagine how we're going to get to these numbers in any meaningful way within the next five or even 10 years.
And this has nothing to do with local need. I think Mr. Conley pointed that out at the meeting.
There are roughly four, now there's many more, and they usually come in between 1,200 and 2,000 units of additional affordable housing. The waiting list for the-
Can I, please, just a quick, I guess I had a real problem with this because when you look at some of these things, and tell me if I'm reading this wrong, these are not studies that look at our community and say, "What is really the need in our community", like there were things across the state that said, "We think the state needs so much, here's your share." And so to me, it feels like these numbers, like the 1,200, 2,000 units, I can see a couple pages here, right, Section 7, a couple pages later, it went through something else like that. But again, it just, it felt like to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, that these numbers were not what is really needed in this community, but a much larger, "Here's what we think is overall, and we think you deserve this share." Am I reading that incorrectly? If we're going to the state and say, "This is what our plan and the data says, here's what we need," when if we don't really feel like this is what we need, which is different from what we're saying we're trying to get to, it just, it creates a tremendous gap that I think is not realistic.
So why does the Ridgefield plan dignify these external sources that exaggerate local need if this is really Ridgefield's plan?
The alternative is to do it our way. You know, people are talking about reclaiming local control from the state. Well, the way to do that is not to fight them on things that they're going to do anyway and allowed to do, but it's to do it our way and show them that we're making the strides that we need to make. This plan is about reclaiming local control for the town of Ridgefield. And I don't support the fair share law, but I'm telling you the reasoning behind it. And the purpose behind this whole report is so we can do it our way. I mean, there are only two ways that we can answer the need for housing. And one of them is to have the state impose its solutions on us, and if you look at some of the bills going to the floor, those are very imposing, or to do it our way. And so to me, this plan is all about local control. It's about, you know, recognizing that we have to do something, this is about doing it our way. State regulations, yes, have sapped local control. I am not a fan of 8-30G. I understand why they did it, but I think there are probably better ways to go about it.
What does Mr. Goldenberg really believe? Is he really on Ridgefield's side? Or does he think Ridgefield's prosperity and privilege is undeserved and should be defined down? Thanks to Robin Caruso, Mr. Goldenberg can't get away with such publicly contradictory positions.
That as the Affordable Housing Chairman, you support this legislation, you support Desegregate Connecticut.
Uh, did I say that?
Yeah. You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something if you guys don't mind.
Please.
Give me a minute here, please. This was something from last year. "Ridgefield, like most of Fairfield County's bedroom suburbs, is mostly white and affluent. Characteristics my wife and I didn't dwell on when we moved here."
Or you don't believe the whole thing? No, please say it.
In 1991, we were drawn by the good schools, charming downtown, and a home with a stunning view. It's the kind of town you can fall in love with easily. Around that time, the Schiff versus O'Neill lawsuit was working its way through the courts. A group of Hartford-area families had sued the state alleging disproportionate educational spending that favored white communities. As I followed the story in the news, it became clear to me that Ridgefield, like its sister suburbs, was something else, segregated. Many people in places like Ridgefield believe that the segregation in our towns just happened, and that if we keep an open mind, it will simply unhappen. It won't. As scholars and authors have shown, as Richard Rothstein did in his widely-read book, The Color of Law, segregation was designed into the suburbs through an ugly history of economic discrimination and exclusionary land use policies, and it will take equal intentionality to remedy it. The advocacy organization Desegregate Connecticut understands this, and it's why they're shrewdly focused on land use policy. Their modest proposals contain in SB 1024, which require some towns to allow certain types of multifamily housing where it currently is not allowed. Opponents of the bill made the flag a home role. "It's a state takeover of local zoning that cried, which will destroy the character of our towns. Underlying their current histrionics, I believe, is not racism, but an antipathy toward change. Our town is perfect, why change it? I long approached this as a communications challenge. If everyone simply understood the systemic discrimination behind our land use and housing policies, they'd become advocates for change. But I was naive. I now believe the only way communities like Ridgefield will enact the need changes is if they have to. And that's why I enthusiastically support Senate Bill 1024 and hope the provisions excluded by the committee will be reinstated." I don't think you are very forthcoming.
No.
And I don't think you are transparent.
Amen.
And Dave, Dave, with all due respect, I apologize that you stepped down.
Exactly.
From this committee, and we thought-
That's not what it is.
I agree with that, and I wholeheartedly agree. I'm floored.
Exactly.
I'm absolutely floored. I came here for information, and the way that you presented this was, "The state is making us do this, and let's take it full by the horns, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're in control of this." But that is your role.
That's right.
And you have a personal bias about this. And I don't think that you should be the chairman of this committee at all.
Well, I have my personal beliefs. Do you want to call that bias? Yes, of course I have my personal bias.
And you've been on the committee for 20 years. And it's like this, you are wrong.
Dave, your bias shows when you present the plan and don't have your committee vote on it. Your bias shows when you lie to a Board of Selectmen member and say, "They're all on board and they're not." That's when your bias shows. Now, your plan, back to your plan, basically what you're telling us is the state can harm us, which they've been doing it, or we can harm ourselves.
Exactly.
That's, that's a option choice, dude. That's not good.
Well, the term "harm," that's your-
You think that 830G developments that have been going on in town have been good for our town?
No.
Okay, so the state is harming us with legislation.
Yes.
And we can take the whole harms and harm ourselves instead.
That is why, that is why I want to do it our way.
Desegregate Connecticut is just one of many organizations well-financed by powerful and wealthy developers who use social justice as their cudgel to neuter locally-elected zoning officials. They indoctrinate and then infiltrate the ranks of local volunteers who come to believe that the existence of prosperous, low-poverty towns with educationally high-performing schools like Ridgefield is unfair. And now Ridgefield's plan echoes their claims of exclusionary zoning and disparages Ridgefield's land use regulation.
Zoning regulations let the town take control of growth and also let the towns create exclusion, and that's how we wound up with the pattern of segregation that we have in the state.
Zoning regulations let the town take control of growth and create exclusion.
Yes.
When they were created, Ridgefield had a lot of affordability, and the zoning was more zeroed in on commercial versus residential. How do we want to see our community grow? It wasn't for the purpose of creating exclusion.
Well, it wasn't for the purpose of creating class or racial exclusion.
Any kind, socioeconomic exclusion.
But it was created with the idea of excluding multifamily housing.
Zoning exclusion, yes, that's also, that's, I had the same thought. I think in here it's defined as well, like that. I don't want to wordsmith this, but I think it's, that word, it's, this word is doing a lot of heavy lifting here that we may not intend, because-
Oh, you give me the impression that we create for the suburbs.
Correct. Because we, yeah, when you look at the word exclusion, you start going to lots of things. I think in the more detailed ones, you talk about exclusion being, you know, like housing exclusion, right, you know, zoning exclusion of single versus multifamily.
Well, in some places, it was done specifically for racial reasons. Okay, I hear you. I understand that. It's, it's an uncomfortable thing, but I also want to point out that it's completely true, and I will be happy to refer you to some jaw-dropping research that's been done on this, and I don't want to take too much time with that now.
The crazy quilt of towns is a big part of Connecticut's charm, but not everyone, like Mr. Goldenberg, sees it this way. They argue that every town must accept its fair share, and that poverty can be eliminated only by spreading it around, which is about as effective as rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. Hartford has been at this for 30 years with statutes like 830G and now 830J, which requires us to do to ourselves, through a low-income restricted housing plan, what Hartford has failed to do to Ridgefield, at least so far. Homogenizing Connecticut and reducing Ridgefield to that common denominator will not reduce poverty, create social justice, or make Ridgefield a more complete, more competitive, or better community. The low-income restricted housing in this plan will be inaccessible to most Ridgefielders, but threatens to define down the town. With lower educational attainment punishing success and prosperity, building low-income housing where there is very low poverty endangering safety and security is unnecessary to tap a highly mobile and compact Fairfield County workforce. It will not improve public schools' performance, nor will it preserve and enhance property values, which for many families is their single biggest asset. This is not Ridgefield's plan. It's not even the Affordable Housing Committee's plan. It is one man's plan, and it has been 20 years of indoctrination and infiltration in the works. His plan disparages Ridgefield's zoning history as exclusionary and says he has jaw-dropping evidence. He exaggerates and inflates local need to build low-income housing where there is little or no unmet local need on precious habitat and sacred open space. To import Ridgefield's fair share of Connecticut's poverty, he mislabels the low-income housing plan, calling it- He mislabels the low-income housing plan, calling it an affordable housing plan. He tells us he wants to do it Ridgefield's way while making very public contradictory statements that tell us this is Hartford's way, not Ridgefield's. That is why you were invited to come and to speak up at Ridgefield's public hearing on the mislabeled Affordable Housing Plan at seven thirty PM on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, in Town Hall, in a large conference room. Please add your comments and like this video. You can also reach me at editor@ridgfieldrecord.com. Thank you for watching.